Okay, are we on Dale? Are we on, is it, doesn't sound like it's coming over. Now we re, yeah, there we go. Okay, we're glad to welcome you here to our school board meeting for December and we're pleased to have all of you here. And we'll begin our meeting by having our pledge and mission statement. And so Terry, if you would lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you Terry. Okay, next on our, next on our agenda, we have the opportunity of recognizing the Utah High School Athletic Association Academic All-Staters. And before we go, wow, way to go you guys, that's awesome. And Shane, if you want to introduce Skyview and their academic all-staters, I know they have some not here because they're involved with other activities at the school, but
All right. Yeah, do you want them facing you or the audience here?
That's the time you face the audience.
All right, wait, you know, both sides. We had Weston Walker from boys golf. We have Ben Moleman from boys cross country. We had Hannah Monson and Hunter Krebs, both from volleyball. We have Alexia, sorry, Alexia Slade and Elsie Christensen from girls tennis. Kendall Whitbeck from girls tennis. Emma Larson and Rachel Patty from girls soccer. Annie Buxton, Clarissa Mast, Jaclyn Fielding from girls cross country. And Jackson Beach and William Ferguson from Skyview. And Mr. Monson, I wanted to make sure I noted that Skyview was the only school in the state that had a representative from every fall sport that actually had an academic all-state, so we're real proud of these guys and girls.
We're really proud of you too. Now, now, now before, whoa, 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 guys, wait a second. Before you sit down, would you go stand, if you have, if you have members of your family here, would you go by, stand by them and have them stand up so we could recognize them too? So make sure that you're not the only one standing up, bring, bring your family members up too, have them stand up. Okay, let's give these folks a big round of applause. We understand, we understand that accomplishment like that is a family affair, so we really appreciate the parents and family that support these young men. Okay, Brittany, do you want to do Ridge Line, please?
We had a lot too, but it's snowing outside, so I think Kayden's the only one that made it. All right, so from Ridge Line, we had Kayden Bowler, who's for boys golf. And then we also had Wesley Allred, who's boys cross country. Brooke Jacobson from volleyball. From girls tennis, we had Emily Adams, Mary Tulis, and Rachel Danes. Girls soccer, Tayla Knowles. Girls cross country, Jessica Merkley. And football, we had Peyton Thomas. And they collectively had a 4.0 GPA, so.
Wow. Make sure you have your parents stand up too there, let's recognize them. Okay, Representative from Mountain Crest, Mike, have you seen?
I have not.
Do you, do you have a, do you have a copy?
I do, Mountain Crest, if you have any Mountain Crest.
He's gonna be, he has the opportunity to speak all by himself.
Okay, we'll just turn the mic over to him here.
First of all, tell everybody who you are and what sport you were in.
All right, I'm Jayden Cutler, and I played golf.
I saw that first on the list, now golf's a pretty good sport.
I'll finish reading the Mountain Crest. We also have Branson Fonsbeck in boys cross country. Hunter Waitren in cross country and in volleyball, no one there. Girls tennis. Rachel Clark for girls tennis, girls soccer, girls cross country, we have two, Mikel Durham and Michaeli Bladen. And in football, no one in football. So Mountain Crest had some good representation as well, but thank you for coming, even in the weather, let's give him a hand. And walk down by your parents, we want to recognize your parents as well. Want to thank the parents for your support and helping these athletes.
Okay, we certainly are proud of our athletes that are, that are scholar athletes and just congratulate you and wanted to recognize you tonight, so thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is public input, Dale, do we have any, if you want to check and see, please? You don't all need to go, we'd love to have you stay and join us here. But thank you for coming, very, very much.
Mike, is that one that we just, Massachussetts walked in?
Oh wait, we better rec.
Come on up. Bring your parents up with you too, because we're going to have them stand, so just have them come up.
Oh, hey, this is Ben Moleman, he's a cross country athlete, outstanding student as well, I've had him since he was in eighth grade, so I've known him for a while, and he is just fantastic kid as well as an athlete, so, Ben Moleman.
Ben, congratulations. And parents, thank you, because we know this is, this takes a whole family to get this accomplishment, so thank you, parents. Dale, anything on the public consent? Okay, then we'll move down here. If I can get my computer to work here. It doesn't seem to want to cooperate here. Okay, we need to have the approval of the minutes from, or is this part of the consent agenda? Because my computer, computer is not, it's jumping here. Okay, could we have any comments or concerns about the consent agenda? Anybody? Could I take a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is outlined?
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Second.
Okay, it's been approved in second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is done. So let's move down now to the approval of the school calendar. And Mike, is that you?
Yes.
That's going to do that?
Our last boarding meeting, we shared with you the committee's recommendation for the seventeen eighteen school calendar, and at this time, if, like to ask for your approval or answer any additional questions that you might have.
I have a question. I read recently that some data shows that having more breaks throughout the school year and a shorter summer vacation is healthier academically for schools. Can anyone speak to that for me?
I haven't seen any data that shows that, is it, did it have data with it?
I, you know, that's never discussed, never brought up, but I think in our district, we probably have a little bit of a challenge with that because of the complaints we currently receive because of air conditioning in buildings. I remember quite a few years ago, when we were year-round schools, and those schools that were running year-round, or middle schools, we did put air conditioning in those Cedar Ridge and Spring Creek, just to accommodate the AC. And that worked, so I think if, if down the road, we were ever to consider something like that, we'd probably have to accommodate our patrons with air conditioning, because those buildings do get hot, through those times.
And I, I also know that there are some teachers that work in the summer, that have that summer, summer break, that might be a little.
I'm not suggesting that we move that direction, I'm just, it was something that I read recently.
Let us do some research. I know the, most Arizona school districts have done that, but they all have air-conditioned buildings, and it's probably smarter for the kids to be in air-conditioned building in the summer than it is in the winter. They have gone to that kind of schedule, and they're only out about a maximum of three to four weeks during any break, so we'll look at the research.
It's something to consider and look at.
It just, well, the stuff that I read just said that, that having a twelve-week summer break causes a lot of.
Retention loss.
Learning loss, retention, the retention is less.
There's some time spent.
That's been out there for a long time, that we have an agrarian model that doesn't fit the country for most parts of, at least the urban areas of our country, do not need that three-month break, you know?
The interesting thing is though, the parent, parental feedback, at least that we've had, Mike, right, it doesn't agree with shortening that summer, summer season, as it were, so there's some people that feel pretty strongly about that, but, yeah, that's something to investigate.
And when we were on year-round school, the parents really didn't like spreading out the whole year, we took away from their summer vacation, I thought, parents were not in.
It was really a change for them at that time.
But, but if we look at the research and we have that, that's something we could discuss with our parents in that calendar committee and see what's out there, see what their feelings are on that.
It could certainly be an item to get feedback on, yeah.
Yep, it would be.
Speaking from the experience of a teacher in a rural area, it would have forced me to choose a different profession, because my, my summer on the farm was a must in order to make enough to support my family.
And I was just going to add too, when I taught with the year-round schedule, there was a lot more stress doing it that way, you just kind of needed a way, a time away from kids for a while to sort of regroup and get back into the swing of things. And there was a lot of teacher burnout with that, when we did the year-round and had the short breaks.
But it's something we can discuss and look at.
Sure.
I'm not a fan of year-round either, but, but it just suggested like an eight-week break instead of twelve or something like that.
Okay, okay, any other comments on that? Could I take a motion then that we accept the calendar for the two thousand sixteen, no, seventeen eighteen school year?
I move. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the proposed calendar for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, done, Mike. Terry, do you want to recognize a couple of students back there?
Actually.
Oh, Brittany.
I want to apologize to the board, I am attracted softball, my goodness, right there. It's taken me forty minutes to come around here, so I apologize. And I have a lot of, my kids are going to come because they're ones that are wrestling for men, and ones that are A C two class, the other one's studying for a big exam at eighteen o'clock tomorrow, so they send their apologies.
Accepted. And glad you didn't speak, Terry, and get in an accident. That's why I said that. Bring, bring your, is that, is that her?
Bring your mom too.
Yeah, bring your mom with you, have her come up too. We're going to recognize you anyway, so you might as well come on up.
All right, so this is Tayla Knowles, and she was our academic all-state for girls soccer, so.
Thank you, Kayla, and I think you were on all-state second team, is that correct? Did I hear that?
She doesn't know.
I thought I heard that on the radio too, that you were recognized as all-state second team.
Someone said something to me about it from the newspaper too, I'm not even sure.
Well, congratulations on both of those.
Thank you.
That's awesome. And we want to recognize your mom too, thank you for supporting her and helping her. Let's give them a hand. Thank you, Brittany. Oh, now it's our favorite time, Dale, financial report.
The report in your packet, I'll just let you read that, you can see if you have any questions, but the information I wanted to share with you tonight had to do with the revised revenue estimates that we've just received from the state, based off our October one count that, that modified our, our revenue estimates. If you remember last time we talked, we had, it was like four hundred and five more students on the October one count than what we had estimated, incredible growth. And anyway, with unrestricted funds that that will generate for the district now, with that many additional WPU's that we'll have, it actually picks up for us just over two point three million dollars of additional state revenue, and that's discretionary funds. The, the adjustments for the restricted programs, like transportation and, you know, all the others, will come the end of December, and so that one I don't have yet, but, so I want to put together a, a good comparison showing what we had estimated and what our new revised numbers are. So sitting right now, in total unappropriated funds that we have in the budget, we're just over three point one million dollars as to where we're sitting right now, so.
Now, do we have to have extra FTEs at some schools to accommodate that many students?
Yeah, and that's, like I say, I need to work those in, as far as covering those additional costs, and that, they'll affect the budget, but, but we'll have that here probably next month, so you can see that.
Okay, any questions on the budget for, for Dale? Thank you Dale, Reader's Digest version is great.
Okay, you now have another student from?
Yep, I saw that.
Grab that mic, Terry.
There are many people here, can you hear me?
But it's going out, Terry, it's going out.
Oh, super. Well, I am very proud to present to the members of the school board, Branson Fonsbeck, who is being recognized for academic all-state for cross-country. Congratulations.
Brandon, congratulations, that's awesome. Thank you for representing our district and Mountain Crest so well. Now, you don't have parents here, so just have Terry stand up and let her represent your parents, and we'll give you all a round of applause here.
Well, his mom's in Hawaii, so, it's a tough life.
Got left behind?
And she didn't take you?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Terry. Board committee reports, and does anybody have reports to make? Kathy or Jeff, you're on here.
Oh, I have one thing I wanted to just tell you about. You might not know, but we have a representative on the Logan Family Resource and Information Center, and that person is myself, and I get invited to maybe one meeting a year, but I just wanted to pass it along as information. It's a really cool organization, and I was going to look at the address up in the phone book, but you know the elementary school that's in the island?
Wilson.
Wilson, okay, it used to be on campus there in.
Trailer.
Trailer, but now they bought a home that went up for sale that's a little bit to the north of it. And they have a library for small children, and they have toys for small children. And so any family from our district or the Logan School District can go there and check out any of the books or any of the toys, and there's a lot of learning toys for preschool children there. And then they have a reading hour, and then I think they have several other different kinds of workshops involving learning for preschool children. And so if you ever run across any parents in our district who are wondering if there's a place where they could get learning materials for their child who is not in school or in kindergarten, probably even early elementary, that's a good place to send them.
What was the name of the?
It's called the Logan Informational and Resource.
Family resource, isn't it?
Yeah.
Families in there.
Okay, so Logan Family.
Isn't it the family?
Informational and Resource Center. And I'll look it up for sure, let you know if it's different.
You should know, because you, you've been cutting checks to them for years, but I think, I think we stopped a year or two ago, supporting that, and told them that they needed, it was probably longer than that, because when we were cutting, cutting back, but they, they did have a lot of our patrons.
That went there.
Went there, go there.
They run on mostly grants, I think, and Representative Red's wife is the one who started it twenty years ago, so they do write a lot of grants for it, but it's accessible to any family in Cache Valley who would like to use it.
I know Logan District uses that quite, quite a bit, because it's within their area there, so they do.
Just additional information item.
Okay, Jeff, MBA?
I apologize, the hard copies are on my printer, which isn't a good place for them. I was going to bring everybody a hard copy, I sent out an email containing that, but that was, as part of our MBA certification requirement, it was to give a thirty-second report on the state of the district, and so I'm counting on all of you to help me polish that, that was round one, as it were.
I thought round one was really well done.
So did I.
Well, I will take any suggestions for, for improvement before, and I don't know where this would reside as far as document, if anything.
Well, when we put our, get together our school, our board book, it'll be in there.
We can put it in our, our board book, although this kind of would change from year to year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know if that's the right place for it or not, but when I read it, Jeff, I thought it gave a lot of really good condensed information, if somebody was complaining about our district, I could cite these things that were mentioned in here as to the things that are going right in our district, which is a lot, and bravo to you for condensing it down to this one short page.
Okay, well, like I said, if anybody has any suggestions, we can polish it up a little bit, so.
I have a question while we're talking about MBA, Kathy, were you going to send us a list of the, of the goals that we were supposed to accomplish?
I think Jeff was going to do that, but I can't.
Oh, whoops.
Oh, no, the, the ones for the, the level four, the ones that we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought at the last meeting, you said that you would email them to us all.
I think that it was me, now that I read.
We both said we would, but he said he had the, the.
The hard copy I had.
Yeah. So, do you want to do that, or do you want me to do that?
If you don't mind Kathy, I, if you still have them, I'll look for it, but I think I have it at my home.
I've got them.
I think it doesn't, it has, isn't the deadline this month?
So it was December first, and I called Richard and begged for some extra time, he's, and so he said by the tenth, so that would be this weekend.
That would be Saturday.
Yeah.
So I'll need you that.
Do you want me to call and ask for more time?
Well, what have we got left to do?
We don't have anything, I'll tell you what they are, complete the open meeting law online was required, a superintendent or business administrator's evaluation was one of them, and didn't we do that?
Well, we, we have done that, but we were waiting for the USBA to come up with their new online, or their new evaluation form, and I haven't seen that yet.
It's ready, they're going to demonstrate it at the conference in January.
Okay, and that's what we were waiting for.
So maybe we could count just us doing our board evaluation for that one.
Okay, that would be fine.
And then attend the training for the school community councils, so those three, those three were required. For continuous improvement, attend the national convention was what we selected.
We've done that.
And for advocacy, Jeff helped us with that, prepare a thirty-second statement on positive outcomes in our district.
Okay, got that one.
Community engagement and collaborative relationships, we selected attend district PLCs, which, I don't know how many you've had, but the ones that you've had, we've attended.
We've attended.
And on accountability, attend eighty percent of the board meetings, and then for foundation of effective governance, revise our mission statement.
We're done.
So, we're done, and I actually went online and finished mine, so I'll send this information, so you can just go online and finish your fourth year.
That would be great, thanks.
And I guess we all have to do it individually. Do you know, Jeff, if we can just call and say all of us on our board have completed this and?
No, you have to go in and do it individually.
You have to do it online.
Okay, then Kathy, would you send us a reminder, so that we can have that done by this weekend?
Tomorrow, I'll send you a reminder.
Well, do you want me to lobby more time?
We might need it.
The only thing he told me is that they're, they're kind of up against the wall, because they present them at the meeting in the first week in January, so.
Okay, I'll hurry tomorrow morning.
Yeah, if you can send that to us, then let's go on, let's go on and get that done, because all we have to do is just check them off that they're done. It shouldn't take us very long.
You have to write one little statement about what you did.
Well, then send us a copy of the statement.
You figure out your own statement.
Now, now you come up with that, okay, we can do that.
Okay.
All right.
Have some more students.
Alan, one other thing.
Yes.
B A T C, I, on their board, I had to let Alan know about their fees for the next school year, just so you guys know, and if you want to go look at them, just go to the B A T C's website, and you can look up the fees. They're basically the same as they were last year, the high school kids get in free unless it's something they have to consume and purchase, so, just so you know. And also, they're, they were wondering when or where are we at on the cash high, Mr. Lickte? Are we progressing anywhere?
It's, it's gone through its final revision with the architect administrative meeting last week, the property's secured, we're still working where, to find where the sewer will connect, but it, we've changed the, the building to the, to make it a more substantial building, we're going to, to do a block like we have with our other buildings, so it's going, it'll probably, won't go out to bid until like February. But the principal's been in, she's approved the layout, we were always concerned about not having enough money to, to do justice to the building, we had enough to do it, but we were, we had ended up with a sloped roof and with siding on the outside, and we got to the point where we felt comfortable that we could get a flat roof on it and have a brick or block building, so it's going to be a really, really nice, you know, so.
Okay.
We'll get it out to bid sometime early in the winter or spring, hoping it'll get as good a bids as we possibly could on, on that kind of a building. So it's kind of been upgraded, because we think we here are, have enough money to do it as we'd like to, instead of just trying to get it done, so that's kind of where we're at.
So, they're going to tear the hay barn down, right? Is that the hay barn that sits right on the?
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, that all has to go. Somebody said they, they, they were already doing some things down there.
They took the quonset down, oval shaped one, but the hay barn's still.
Yeah. And all that stuff will, with the site preparation, will take place with that.
And Wayne said that they were kind of waiting for the subcontractors to get a little more hungry, because everybody's so busy now, that they're hoping that they'll be able to get some better.
Yeah, he's hoping to get a better bid if we waited.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions there? Thank you Jeff, Kathy and Roger for that. Kathy, vice president minute.
Okay, just a couple of things, two principal meetings ago, I asked the principals at that meeting if any of them would be interested in coming to our board meeting and doing some kind of a little presentation, like a five-minute thing, and not everybody was in support of that, but there probably were.
Maybe five or six, do you remember?
Who said that they would be interested in doing it, so I thought maybe I could take a schedule to them and let them sign up at one of their principals' meetings, but I just wanted to make sure, are we? but I just wanted to make sure, are we all in favor of having this little presentation maybe once a month at the...
Study session?
Yes, thank you. Anybody have any negative reason why this would not be good?
I think it would be a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, then, is it okay if I come to the principals?
Sure.
Maybe I'll start with the elementary.
Yeah, that's where you're gonna get the most...
Yeah. Skyview did say they would like to do something, but I don't know about the other high schools. I mean, I don't want it to be time-consuming for the principals or for any of the teachers, but they may have some fun things that they would like to give the children an opportunity to perform.
I know Millville would be more than happy to, to do that, probably be the first school, too. Terry, do you have some more recognitions for us? Come on out.
School board members, I'm happy to stand in for Mike Monson, Skyview, and present to you two fine young ladies here who are recipients of the Academic All-State Award for Girls Cross Country. And we have Annie Buxton, and her parents Julie and Dale are sitting there in the back.
Well, stand up, we need to recognize you guys, too.
And we have Jackie Fielding, and her father Vern is in the back as well.
Well, congratulations, girls, that's awesome. Thank you for substituting their force, Terry, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
And congratulations, girls, that's, that's a great honor there.
Thanks for braving the storm and coming out, we appreciate it, thanks.
See you. You can stick around, we know we'd be happy to have you. Okay, Kathy?
Okay, on the second thing, in putting our little booklet together, I looked at a booklet done by another district, not here in Utah, but they had kind of a little preamble to their booklet. And so I have just copied their preamble and put it on, on our agenda for you to look at and see if there's anything about it that you would like to change or make it more personalized, and let me know next time. We won't work on it today, but we'll do it next time.
Okay.
I'll just ask Carolyn to put it back on again. It would go right before the mission statement and then the, I don't know, let's see, yeah, and then the vision statement, and then our code of conduct would be next.
Okay, with, with this and with what Jeff did, and thinking about the changes that what Jeff did we might have to do, that, that might be a good place to put on our webpage with what Jeff had, because that could change every year.
Yeah.
And we could just have that there, and this could fall into the booklet.
That's what I was thinking, so see what everybody else thinks.
Okay. Board president, minute. Do you wanna come up, Brienne, please? And Kathy, if you wanna just take this, I'm gonna go support.
Okay.
Because this is my granddaughter.
Not quite.
I have to, I have to tell you that story. When we were out on a red ribbon run, Bree rides behind, runs, comes behind me on our tandem, and when we finished the race, some guy came up to Bree and says, "Are you his granddaughter?"
I'm not that young.
Go ahead, Bree.
Okay, so yeah, like Alan said, I work with him at the health department. Oh, sorry, okay, and we recently received some additional funding to do some seatbelt safety measures, and part of that is to increase teen seatbelt safety use, which will obviously help our kids to be safer. And so you should have a list of questions that we're hoping to add to the SHARP survey. Basically, they're just meant to help us identify seatbelt use and perception. So I'll kind of give you a second to look over that. Basically, the questions just kind of talk about if, how kids see seatbelt use, if they kind of think most people wear seatbelts, and then also kind of their thoughts on telling people to wear seatbelts and other people around them telling other people to wear seatbelts. So I'll just give you a second to kind of look over that.
One of, one of the things that we're really concerned about is their perception that they're, they're, they're just immortal, they're never gonna have anything happen to them. And so we were hoping that with these questions, that we could get them to realize how important seatbelt is, and to invite people in their cars to wear their seatbelts.
Yeah, and these questions will kind of just give us a baseline to provide us insight on how to structure our message and kind of create that campaign, so... And Box Elder School District actually added these questions to their SHARP survey the last time it was administered as well.
Is, is 203 and 205 the same thing, or am I just reading it too fast and missing something here?
No, those are just, those are just the way the questions are numbered, Kathy, that's all.
Yeah, but they're asking the same thing.
You said 203 and 205?
Yeah, they're asking the same thing. Would you ask somebody in your car to wear a seatbelt if they were...
They are asking a similar thing, but they put them in different places in the survey to see if the answer is similar.
Consistent.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
That's called to catch anybody that's not honest.
They're just going down, filling in the answers, so...
Okay, does anybody have any questions for us? We'll take a look at this in our next meeting and vote to see if we can get those on the, on the agenda or on the SHARP survey. And it will be just for our district and Logan District, too. It won't be, it won't be across the state, it'll just be for our kids.
Cache County, yeah.
Any questions? Here's the expert, now's your chance.
Awesome, well, thank you for letting me take a little bit of your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and have the superintendent's report.
The only item that I would, excuse me, bring to your attention is the R-School's now initiative. And the only thing that I would bring out there is they presented to the superintendents of the state last Monday, and I took some time just to ask them to be really careful about not paying attention to the other report, which indicates the things that really do matter. And if they wanna, if they wanna have the public happy with how the money is gonna be spent, they ought to spend it on the points that were brought out in the legislative report. And by doing such, I think that they can negate much pushback from the legislature, because it's their report and it tells them the things that they should be spending money on. And I also cautioned them that circumventing the district and the local board, and they promised me that there would be a framework that would be in place, that schools would have to, to abide by a district framework that would target those funds so that it didn't matter whether they came to the school or the school district, they would still be spent on those same goals that we know will make a difference in student achievement. And they brought, oh, the past superintendent of Weber School District, Mike Jacobson. He's been asked to be a representative of, of superintendents and school boards, and he had not seen the report, so he took a copy from me. And, and Mckell Weathers is also in that same category. There are no functioning superintendents on that steering committee, which is about 50 or so people big, but they do have some really good retired superintendents. So I just cautioned them that the worst thing that could happen with the, with a one-time, I don't know how many more years it would be before you could ever go back to the public again, and if we don't spend that money correctly, the public's gonna be really disappointed at the end, because you can spend it on a lot of things that a lot of people think are important, but they aren't gonna raise student achievement. And so I kind of pounded that nail really hard. It was interesting, because I did get a call from Terry, the executive director, last Friday, saying that the committee that was coming to present had hoped to have great support from superintendents. And they wanted to, to know that I was gonna be, be a part of that body and be supportive. And I said, "Well, yeah, you know that I'll be supportive of an increase in funding, but I'm also gonna not just sit back and, and let a proposal go forward that I know won't make any difference." And if part of that isn't raising teacher salaries, then I would be really disappointed. And there's a 25% limitation on raising the, the base salary for, for teachers, and they ask if, if that ought to be raised, and I said, "Well, if, if you're talking that we could put 25% on salaries and then add additional professional development days, then I think you're starting to get into the realm where you'd be addressing one of the, of the key pillars of the things that other districts and states and nations have done to get the professionalization of the teacher profession." And so it's gonna be interesting, they, they're gonna take five months. I, I did caution them to be very careful about, they, they want it to go directly to schools, and, and I said, "You know, if what you're trying to do there is just keep it out of the hands of administrators, then just, there's, there's another way to do that. You just say that the money goes for people who are in the classroom, and, and I'll take care of the administrators, and so will you." They don't understand a lot of the, of the public and people who are in the policy that, that we're really low in the amount of money we put into administration in the state also, but we can, we can make that work with the money going directly into the classroom. But they've got to give that some ability of the, of the school board to direct that, because schools don't pay salaries, plain and simple. They, we pay salaries, and, and you wouldn't want 26 separate salary, salary schedules out there, and with the larger schools getting much more money and the smaller ones not. So there's a lot of things that need to be worked out, but it's the best support we've had from the business community and any group of individuals or groups in the state in, in the 21 years that I've been here. And the other report that Utah Foundation came out with just shows you in the 20, just corresponds to the years I've been in Utah, what's happened to the funding in the state. And, and so there's, there isn't anybody who can say that we were making the same effort that we did years ago. Used to be that you could, you could say, "Okay, wow, we don't have a lot of money in education, but we put a high percentage, almost higher than anybody, of our individual income into funding public debt." We're, we're somewhere in the middle of the pot now, pack, and, and we don't make the effort we used to, so...
Well, Steve, if they looked at that report from the legislators, that legislators come up with, and, and that, that's the best report that I've seen so far.
Oh, it's absolutely...
It, they're, it's right on target.
Right on target. So if they, they spend it on things other than addressing what's in that report, I, I just think we're missing a wonderful opportunity.
Couldn't they take a look at what they're doing and look at what they're, what that...
That's what I asked them.
And bring that online?
That's what I asked them, yeah.
Okay. And every time we see a legislature, we, legislator, we need to bring that up to them.
Yeah.
That this will make a difference.
Yeah.
Yes. Would you come up to the microphone, because this is, this is being carried out over the web, so please come up so we can hear you. And just state your name and...
Hi, my name is Rachel Dequa, and I was wondering what the certain things that you mentioned that they would have to follow in order to please the public? What certain things they'd have to put the funding into?
It's a report called No Time to Lose, that the National...
Legislative Council, I think is what it's called.
National Count, National Conference of State Legislators, NCSL, did. They studied for, they studied for three years, other countries. So each state in the U.S. has, has one legislator as a representative on this council, and they studied other countries for three years to see what they're doing, what the real successful, educationally successful countries are doing. And then they wrote it up in this report, their findings, things that they feel that Utah should move forward with. So that's what the superintendent is referring to. So the report is called No Time to Lose.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, let's make sure when we say legislature, we ask them to please study that and contemplate that, No Time to Lose, because, boy, that is right on target, it really is.
But another thing that we should, we need to be doing, if we want this initiative, if they're gonna get this initiative on the ballot in, in November, whenever, I think 2018, isn't that their target date? If they're gonna get the initiative on the ballot, then we've gotta be talking to people around us, not just legislators.
Right.
We have to get some grassroots support for it, or it's not gonna fly.
Yeah. It's got, it's gotta be, the wording has gotta be completed in five months and turned into the, the lieutenant governor's office, and after that, wording can't be changed. So that's what, what they're working on now, is exactly what the wording would be in the ballot initiative.
Well, that's something we might wanna bring up in our community councils when we meet with them.
Yeah.
And any PTA meetings or anything like that that we do?
And the chocolates and popcorn, or just a little?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you, all you do.
Thank you, Steve.
There was a, a nice letter or li, nice card that the staff here at the district office sent us last time when I conducted, and I didn't open it here, so I didn't relay it on to you or let you see it, but it was, "Thank you for the raise."
And this is, this is from the classified employees and how, how much they appreciate what's being done for them, too, so... Let's see what this one is. This is from the, the principal of Park, Shelley, for thanking us for what we've done, so with the bonus. So good. Okay, well, if I could take a moment to adjourn, I know that there's a mail waiting for us, and so we better go get it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favors, well, I'm not even asking if there's any discussion. All in favors say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed say no? Okay, we'll see you at 151 East, 300 North in Hyde Park in a few minutes. And if anybody needs to ride, I'll, I'll be happy to take them.